Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for our City Council meeting?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Present.
Councilwoman Easter.
Present.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Present.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Present.
We have four present and one absent.
Item four, we have presentation of the minutes from the previous held meeting on Thursday, October 13, 2016. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for October 13, 2016. It's been moved by myself, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item five, we have approval of the proposed agenda. I'd like to add an amendment to the agenda to add item 6B, which is the resolution concurring with the Illinois Department of Transportation's modifications to Missouri Avenue as a portion of Martin Luther King Bridge project. I am making the motion to add item 6B.
Second.
Do we have any questions from Councils? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. We have item six, reports of the Public Works Committee, Councilman Robert Easton III.
Thank you, Mayor. 6A is the presentation of resolutions approving the annual more fuel tax maintenance plan for fiscal year 2017. 6B is the resolution concurring with the Illinois Department of Transportation IDOT modifications to Missouri Avenue as a portion of Martin Luther King Bridge project. I'd like to move for the approval of items 6A and B.
So move.
No questions?
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. We do have representatives from IDOT here. They wanted to come forward at this time. We just passed the legislation, but to talk to the citizen system a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Ann Taylor Creage, and I am working with the Illinois Department of Transportation on the project associated with the replacement of the Martin Luther King Bridge structure. With me tonight is Jerelyn Hazard, and Erin Cover, as well as LB Jelen from... LB Jelen is from the Illinois Department of Transportation, but Jerelyn Hazard and Erin Cover are both with Majestarian Masters, who is the engineering consultant for this particular project. This evening, we wanted to come before you to ask the city requesting the city's concurrence regarding the performance of these roadway improvements associated with the replacement of the Martin Luther King Bridge structure. And in particular, we are looking at some of the modifications that will have to happen to Missouri Avenue as it relates to the replacement of these two bridge structures. The construction project includes a new bridge, retaining walls, as well as miscellaneous roadway improvements associated with that. The construction of this project will require, as I indicated before, improvements to Missouri Avenue, which is currently within the right of way of the state of Illinois and currently maintained by the city of East St. Louis. We met previous earlier in September with the City Manager, City Manager Logan, where we began to kind of talk a little bit about this project and share with him. And he recommended that we come and share it with the City Council, as well as with members of the community about this particular project. With the concurrence, what's happening is that the city agrees to execute the necessary agreements related to the work that's intended to be done, and also to continue to do maintenance of Missouri Avenue, which is currently maintained by the city, as well as new storm sewers that will be included in the project with the whole reconstruction of that. One of the things that was also brought to our attention when we met with City Manager Logan had to do with many of the brick pavers of Missouri Avenue. It was brought to our attention that the city would like for us to salvage those and deliver them so that the city can use them in other areas of the city, and that is something that the department will be willing to do, parenting it as a part of this project. I'm going to ask Jerelyn Hazard to provide you a little bit more details about the modifications that will need to happen as it relates to Missouri Avenue and the packet of materials that you have. You do have some maps that talks about the specific location where this project is located, and she can provide you more of those details as it relates to what is going to happen specifically. Jerelyn?
Thank you, and thanks for having us tonight. As she mentioned, we are replacing the Martin Luther King Approach Structure. So it's not the main bridge, it's the approach structure. It's the middle of the three structures, not the eastbound or westbound ramp, but it's the one that carries one lane in each direction. It's the oldest structure. It was built at the same time they built the Martin Luther King Bridge. And just due to its condition and deterioration and the seismic detailing of it, it's been recommended to be replaced. It's currently 15 spans, so there's a lot of substructure units holding it up. We're going with a five-span replacement, so we're going to take the number of substructure units down, but that's generally because there's a lot of things going on under there that weren't going on under there before. So we have Illinois relocated Route 3 that is now divided lanes that's under the structure. We also have three railroad lines that are under there, Union Pacific Terminal Railroad and KCS. And then we have Missouri Avenue, and we have the new pump station is being built at the corner of Missouri Avenue there with Second Street. So because of all those constraints, in order to jump over all of those things, as well as the existing foundations that are there, we don't want to go back on top of those, we set this span arrangement to try to jump everything. Our first span arrangement, we were landing right in the middle of Missouri Avenue and didn't want to do that and impact it in that fashion, to have to go around. So we moved it as far as we could to get it off to the north side. In your packet, you'll see Missouri Avenue is currently 45 feet wide. It is a brick street. There is still brick there, you can see it underneath all the construction. There's a lot going on down there right now. There aren't any curb and gutters at this point. So what we would need to do to be able to put that pier in is to realign Missouri Avenue just to the south side. So it's not changing the full alignment, but it's moving the traffic to the south side of the street. It would still be 22 feet in width, which is per the current guidelines. We would be putting down an asphalt street with curb and gutter and tying into the storm sewers that are being placed right now for the pump station project. So that would handle drainage, it would greatly improve the street as is, and it would allow us to also put the pier in the new structure. Those are some of the pros and cons of what's going on with Missouri Avenue itself. The bridge itself that we're replacing, we are putting in wider shoulders, so there will be room for disabled vehicles if something happens. Right now, when you drive across the bridge with the truss span, there's not a lot of room up there. There's no lighting going in. And also on 5564, as you go underneath the bridge that we're replacing, the retaining wall is pretty close to the shoulder there, and there's not a lot of sight distance around that curb. So that's another thing that we're doing with the project, is pulling that sight distance issue back, moving to retaining wall as well. Any questions? Anything that I glossed over that you'd like more information on?
No.
No questions? Thank you guys for coming. The legislation has already been passed, but thank you for escorting that to our citizens.
Thank you.
Do we have anything further from the Public Works Committee, Councilman?
No, ma'am, at this time.
Item seven, reports of the Finance Committee, Councilwoman June Hamilton-Dane.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven, a presentation of an ordinance for the Mayor's City Council to approve Amendment Number 1 to the 2016 budget. I'd like to move for approval of item 7A.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman June Hamilton-Dane, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any questions regarding item 7A? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Do we have anything further from the Finance Committee?
She got nothing.
That's a public speaker. Anything further from the Finance Committee? Thank you, Councilwoman June Hamilton-Dane. We are now going to report for the Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Elizabeth Greenwood, but before we go there, I just want to publicly congratulate Councilwoman Greenwood, our new state president.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We definitely look forward to working with you on the state level.
Thank you. And thank you to the citizens of East St. Louis. I cannot have done it without you. Thank you. Item AA, presentation of regulatory affairs business license. We have four: In-N-Out Mini-Mart located at 906 North 11th Street, LA Customs Auto Service, 1443 Bond Avenue, Pops Holding Group, 2441 Bond Avenue, Waggons, 517 Missouri Avenue. I would like to make a motion to approve item AA.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes.
Item AB, presentation of an ordinance for the Mayor and City Council to approve the purchase of labor and material for the installation of three-phase 480/277 vote panel board with 24-amp three-phase breaker, also the installation of a 30 kVA transformer to power existing 200-amp single-phase 42-space panel. I would like to make a motion to approve item AB.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Do we have anything further from the Public Safety Committee?
Not at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We're moving on to item nine, reports of the Community Development Committee. That is Councilman Roy Mosley Sr. In his absence, I will conduct the Community Development Committee. Item 9A is presentation of an ordinance for the Mayor's City Council to convey parcel number 02-26.0-300-013 and parcel number 02-26.0-300-014 to the Capel Foundation for a Youth Mentoring Center. Is there a motion to approve item 9A?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 9B is presentation of an ordinance of the City of East St. Louis authorizing an approved property eligible for the year 2016 citywide rehab program. And this rehab will be at 18 North 79th Street. Is there a motion to approve item 9B?
Second.
Moving?
Moving.
Is there a second?
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Dean and seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood.
Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Easter, Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 9C is presentation of an ordinance of the City of East St. Louis authorizing approved properties eligible for the year 2016 50/50 citywide rehab program. We have three properties: 627 North 39th Street, 912 North 88th Street, and 20 Holdenville Drive. Is there a motion to approve item 9C for the 50/50 citywide?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Dean, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 9D. Do you all have item 9D?
No.
I don't have it here. I know we discussed it last week. Attorney, what do you feel on this situation here?
The legislation was presented to this bill. I don't know why it didn't make the agenda. We did review it and everything was approved. It was an issue with the planning commission. I believe that they were simply moving to the number of absences that you could have because their schedule had changed from meeting twice a month to meeting once per month. So I had no issues with the change. I don't know why the legislation did not make impact, and there was no issue with what they were proposing. So I think that the council did review the document.
Right.
It has not changed. We could get a document to you tomorrow if it was approved through committee. It has not been altered from that format. If the council wishes to prove the copy of the document that went through committee, we can. We'll get you.
You asked me to... You are asking me to sign a document that no one has seen. It's just blind. So I won't sign it.
Okay, so we need to bring...
It's in front of me.
We're not going to have the document here.
I don't have a copy. Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't in the packet. I don't have a copy of it to give to you, so I don't know.
Okay, so at this point, because we need an original document, we're going to have to forego passing, and I guess we'll pass it at the next meeting. Item 10, any old business? Councilwoman has a proposal. We want to pray.
That's fine. If somebody wants to print a copy, you can.
I just need to check before I can throw that to the document that we're going to use in this case.
Okay, so we'll just come back to it when we got a copy. Okay, so we're going to move on to... Thanks, Councilwoman. We're going to move on to new business. Greenlee Tire Recycling Center came before us last week, and we have a recommendation from the City of East St. Louis Planning Commission, and I'm going to read it. On October 26, 2016, the East St. Louis Planning Commission reviewed a presentation by Greenlee Recycling Center, represented by Y. Thomas Thomas and Richard Trelore. The development plan is to build and operate a tire recycling facility at 105 South 17th Street. The developer has site control and financing in plus. The developer indicated they would not seek tax abatement and any vision development incentive that may be applicable at this time. They plan to be operational by spring of 2017. Employment would be approximately 17 for this phase of operation. The developer stressed the desire to hire as many local residents as possible. Training will be provided by the developer. The site is currently zoned correctly, M1, which is manufacturing and industrial. A motion was made by Donald Davis, seconded by Lorenzo Savage, to recommend to the City Council to assist and approve the project as presented. All commissioners voted to approve this motion. Motion was carried. Please accept our recommendation to approve this project and assist with the development as applicable. This is not something that we really needed to vote on, but I wanted to... It came before committee last week, and I wanted to make sure the council was okay with the project before I sent out a letter supporting it. Everybody's okay with it?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion needed, I just wanted to make sure we were okay with it. Okay. Item 12.
Mayor, I have one item that the City Manager wished for me to pass out to the council.
Okay.
This is the city's finance software penetration. It's five versions out of date and is no longer being supported. This is an item that had been budgeted for at the beginning of the year, and the upgrade needs to occur. Mr. Stewart can speak to the details on the issue, but the City Manager in his absence asked that we give this to you guys for consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion to add this item as, under new business, as item 11B?
Yes. I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. At this time, we're going to ask Mr. Stewart to come forward.
He's right here.
I'm sorry. To give us a brief overview.
Just as Attorney Wagner stated, this is the city's penetration software, so it's the city's accounting software. We're five versions past what we should be. Currently, if there was any errors or any data that would be lost, or any problems that would occur in the system, there is no guarantee that our accounting software support team would be able to recover that information. So we're in a position of vulnerability. So the total cost of getting everything upgraded, getting this product to the most recent version, as well as any hardware upgrades as far as for servers, would be approximately $50,000. So it's $32,000 for the software itself, an additional $15,000 for the two servers that's needed. One server for the actual accounting software, and another software for the actual report writer that we use. Again, this was something that the Budget Director budgeted for us at the beginning of the year. He's been well aware of the issue for over a year. We talked with our accounting software provider. So this was something that was known. We knew they would stop supporting us at some particular point in time. We just didn't know at what point in time they would not be able to support us. So we wanted to definitely get this out and get this taken care of before something actually did happen and we'll be able to recover it.
Do we have any questions from council? Is there a motion to approve item 11B?
So move.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilwoman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Mosley, Councilwoman Hamilton-Dane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mary Jackson Hicks.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 12, City Manager comments. He's not here. Item 13, do we have any comments from City Council?
Yes.
Councilman?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for all the donations and all the help and all the prayers and the support and a lot of time, grieving time, losing my life. I would especially thank you to the East St. Louis Police Department for all the hard work, and I appreciate that. Until I'm a council person, though, they came by and talked all about Council Greenwood and, you know, Mayor, phone calls, Councilwoman Dean. I appreciate that. I just want to say thank you. My family thanks you as well.
Have a seat. Do we have any comments? I have one announcement that was in the paper vote. You do have... The City of East St. Louis Deputy Commissioner will be having a public hearing on Thursday, November 17, 2016, at 5:30 PM. The location of the public hearing will be City of East St. Louis, Illinois City Hall, 301 River Park Drive, East St. Louis, Illinois, second floor, Council chamber, right here. The purpose of the public hearing is to discuss liquor and liquor licensing. The public is invited to attend, and that is November 17, 2017, at 5:30 PM, right here. At this time, we're going to move to citizens' comments, and we have at the top of the list, Ms. Dorothy Joshua.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
And citizens. I just have a few things. Congratulations to you, Ms. Greenwood, for being our state rep.
Thank you.
So I hope that you do great things while holding that office.
Thank you.
Really, I would like to know from the Finance Committee, what about... Has the budget been passed? What about 2017? 2017 is coming up. What are we doing about that and the budget? And for the public safety part of it, I... We've had... I know, I think I've lost count. It was about 20 murders thus far, maybe 21. What are we doing about the public safety aspect of the city coming up next year? And then the trash... And, and then the trash service. I still see people on my block without, they don't, they trash out. So trash service is still an issue. Where are we on making sure that everybody in the city has trash service to eliminate some of the trash that's being thrown throughout the city? Although the city is much cleaner, you know, I drive down St. Clair Avenue and stuff, so the city is looking much, much cleaner, and whoever is doing that job is doing a terrific job, trying to keep it up. But the three things on my agenda is the trash service, the budget, and public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joshua. Ms. Clark, do you wanna come and address the budget?
The only thing that I can say is that the city manager expects to have a budget on file. As I think tomorrow, tomorrow's Sunday, so I think it will be on file on Monday, 2017, like it's, well, probably.
And also, as it relates to that budget, we will make sure that we discuss, you know, the finances. We will be having special town halls to discuss the financial, the budget.
Did 2016 ever pass?
Yes. Yes. Yes, public safety.
Well, we have been in discussions, I met with the mayor, when was that, Friday?
Yes.
And we discussed some issues and concerns that we had in the public safety area. The chief can give us an update on the actual number of murders, which I think, Ms. Joshua, you may be right, it's like 21?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Last year, we were at 19, we hit an all-time low. I guess we had it at 19, I guess, maybe about six years ago.
Right.
This year, we hit 22, so we're right around the average, now, I think it's the average for that number, but we are. But I talked to an individual yesterday that ran some, or two days ago, that ran some stats for us. I do want the citizens to know, even with that homicide number there, crime in East St. Louis has dropped 10%, and that's tremendous, of the last year, buying crimes, crimes down 10%. There are some other things that we're doing as well, as far as enforcement. Traffic enforcement is up, so be mindful if you see some public officers up there stopping cars in the city, traffic enforcement is up. They're doing some more proactive controls, doing some more business checks. Like I said, the homicide number is there, so we're working to get it down, but be assured that crime is down 10%.
And doing the job of actual solving the, those murders, because that's the issue too. And being cold cases are unstopped, so he's been doing a great job. The chief has been doing a great job in trying to solve those as well. And the partnerships that we have with other municipalities, the state police, the St. Clair County, so.
And also to add that with partnerships, once again, some of y'all know, we talked about it, the SLYS unit, the street level investigation, the government enforcement unit, we've taken it to another level, we've got tremendous assistance from the United States Attorney's Office. So actually, when that unit goes out, we have a assistant, a US attorney that's on call, that if we get, if we get anything, whether it's gun offenses, drug offenses, that meet the criteria, all we do is call them, and they're right there with us, they're all actually giving us training. We've had two trainings from the US Attorney's Office, and next training will be doing for officers in that unit's courtroom testimony. So they assist us tremendously, with the US, United States Marshal Service assisting the officers. And the Illinois State Police are just meeting with St. Louis City of Comstat meeting, with their command staff this morning, and officers, we have tasers, but we haven't given them to some officers because of training. So all, so they have a training unit that's gonna give our officers that training, so we get those tasers from the street, less than lethal, these initiatives for officers, and they're gonna do their training for us for free. So we are getting some cooperation with a lot of agencies, and US Attorney, that was one main thing, because they executed to us, and talking myself and some other chiefs, and stayed to us, if there's anything that they can do to assist us. So cooperation is coming in from other agencies as well.
Right. And one of the things that the mayor is really pushing is about grants. So hopefully, we can secure some grants to increase the police department. And we're trying to bring back, I think we have one or two police officers that still laid off, so that we'll have a full force.
And then there's the try, issue of the trash service. So that issue was brought by Ms. Joshua and also Councilman Mosley. So at the onset of that, the city manager has begun to do some things to see who is not, who does not have trash service, so we are in the process of working on that. We're in the process of working on that, it's a huge undertaking. So we are working on that, we're addressing that. Before we go any further, I just wanna take the time out to honor one of our younger interns by the name of Mr. Deshaun, he is 12 years old. I would like him, Deshaun, to stand, he's been interning. I just wanted to acknowledge him and say that we appreciate him, and I know the police officers are enjoying him as he's an intern. Chief, anybody, Deshaun, do you have any, do you have any words?
Uh, Deshaun, I just wanna tell y'all, you know, he's been a guy since he walked into our office one day, and literally walking my office, he said, "Well, Chief, hey, you know, I wanna be a police officer, can you help me out, you know, I wanna ride with you guys, I wanna be a member of you guys." And the guy been talking to him more, he's persistent, he actually had a massive, well, he was a firefighter, I picked him and his family in the fire truck, he was out. He's a real brave senior, he's been taking the work, he's taking the work especially, bringing him home. But he's with us for the long, uh, and this is about a month, so he's sitting with a uniform on. He's in a PECO program, but he's a good kid, you talk to him, that's amazing, so we're glad to have him with us.
Good to get, good reports like that, right? I'm so very glad we have the opportunity to mentor and encourage our young people in the areas of interest that they have as far as their careers and concern. That's great. We have next, Mr. Nate Jeffries. Ms. Terry Barnes.
Please, Ms. 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 I'm here about safety and cleaning my street. I know, I don't know if you all wrote down Bell Humps lately, but it looks nice. I have some pictures that, this debris, I've been asking, they had worked on it, I've been asking them to move this for over two months. Then I also talked to Ms. Clem and Mr. Lorenzo to ask them to come down to, expect it, because I don't think they did it, they could've did better, because it's still flooded on the street. You know, I asked the man, was, was he gonna level it off? He said, yes. He did bring one load of rocks down, but it's not leveled, it's still flooded on the street. And it sit down there, and I asked, you know, before they came, you know, just don't let them get away with that, because, you know, they come down here, you know, with a contractor, and just, just get away with things in East St. Louis, and you know, I look everywhere else when I ride to other cities, it, it doesn't look nothing like that. So I appreciate that they can, the contractor did the work, come back there and get the debris out across the street from our lot. And also, the other picture is that, I don't never go down the back way, but I went down the back way, and then I seen, if you see it, right there with New Belvedere, you couldn't, when you come off of King's Highway to Belmont, with New Belvedere, you can't see because of trees. So I did see some, one of the public workers, and asked them, can they go cut it? So you see what they did, the stop signs up, so when they cut it, the stop sign ain't down, they left it like that. But it, it looked a mess over there, and then it's so much trash over there from 53rd to 58th Streets on Belmont. And I see people working on their houses, and I know they come, public work has cleaned it up so many times, but it's like, you can work on their house, and body towels, and then they just come, you know, throw everything out there, yeah. And then, I'm concerned about my clients on my street, because it's so dark over there. The only light that we have is the light of, you know, around our property and stuff like that. But I called Ameren, and, and they said that we would have to pay, I said like $2,000 for a pole or something. I said, no, we can afford that. But like I said, we're doing our best to keep that street up, you know, and pay to keep the law system down, but, you know. Like I say, and then the precinct committee, I don't know if you all have a meeting with the precinct committee, but I think they can do a lot more work than we're doing. I know you all can't get out there, but it's sad, you know, precinct committee, they really not doing their job. Yeah, I, I wish they could more, but like I said, they can get out there and get that debris out there on the street. It's some flood on that street again because of water just sitting there. They did put new drains down there, so I think if they were to level the street up, the water wouldn't went straight down to the blue drains that they put on our street.
Is the precinct committee not in contact with the citizens?
No. I sent him out, actually, I sent him last week, and I said, I don't get to really talk about you till last week. But anyway, I sent him today, and I talked to him, I said, "You gonna have to, you know, do better, and I think you need to get out and stood up this, when it's time to vote, we would like to see you more, because, you know, I can only do so much, you know, like 53rd is right, but this, you know, it's not as bad as it used to be, it's better, but still, you know, I just think they can get out and report you all, that you all know what's going on and all, not only my precinct, but all of the precincts.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Ms. Clem. The, the roof and leveling off of the street, can you?
Uh, we will look at that, I will, on Monday, go out and take a look at that. If you said the contractor left some debris, they will, you know, they will definitely have to move that. So we will look at what you're talking about leveling off the street on the roof.
I mean, I, I really hope so, because like I say, I've been complaining, I've called Mr. Lorenzo, and they'll come and message and come out and walk the street here, and I return my call, I talk to Ms. Clem. But ain't no way they should've got paid, because, you know, they could've been paid at least with $500 more to put rocks on the street, the buildings up before they put the asphalt down. But like I say, it's gonna flood again after, because of the water still sitting right there in that area.
We will definitely have someone come out and look at it? Okay, and these are the pictures. Treasurer?
Mayor, I have a question, uh, committee meeting the other night, I get the information on TPI, the store bills. And I want you guys to know that when Mr. Bennett, that we got access to store bills, and I need, remember, the city manager called on yesterday, we should have the other. It's 1.2 million unpaid bills that are 90 days or more. And so, that you will turn to the platinum, so that we can update what we had from 2012, that approved TPI. If you notice, councilwoman, it says that there was created template that warned the human people, and I got a copy of that, and anybody over 90 days, was council approved it, we start a collection on it. The second thing I wanted you to do is that the tax levy is due by the first Tuesday, December. So the county, I'm gonna have a special meeting on public hearing to get the tax levy out on time. So just wanted to make a note of the tax levies to do, and you know, the city manager. We're gonna give you one tax levy, and we're gonna give you another tax levy, and what the pension wants. And you guys will make a decision, but we'll be ready, how do we, how long does, how would we have to do a public hearing?
They have not advertised a public hearing, they have.
No, we're not sure if we can do one.
Uh, we can do one now, we have to give them 10 days in the paper. And after that, we can have a public hearing, but we got to get it in the paper. I don't have set a date or a time yet.
Yeah, so we have a couple things to do with Attorney Wagner, calling him, I was saying that yesterday, because we need to go after this Monday for the city of St. Louis. And we look at some of those names on, there were little names, so we need to, this is a lot of things. And the city manager said, this is, the list from the houses already, that's what they owe, and he's gonna talk to them about it before they get turned over. But what it, what the, once the council approves it, we'll be able to move the work people's houses, and they have not paid the bill. So what you have there is a copy of anybody that hasn't been paid in over 90 days.
So that's what clarity, this is 1.2 sewer, unpaid sewer bills by citizens.
This is something I've been asking for since last year.
But I, I just wanna make it clear with citizens, this is one, this is not, this is, citizens, these are delinquent deals for citizens and businesses.
And businesses.
Cities and charities.
Gentlemen and ladies, these are people who did not pay the bill. And I just asked her to pull up everything that's 61 days overpassed, too. This was done back in September.
I, I do have a question about that.
Okay.
Because I bought a piece of property that had an outstanding deal for $1,700. I ended up paying it, but shouldn't that bill have been collected by the previous owner?
Yeah, but, but it is, I'm gonna say this, and this is very important, we kind of follow up on this. For example, if you own a piece of property, and you have a tenant that they don't pay, unless the bond is for sitting up owner, the bill. And that's what needs to happen with this, is that so that the owners of the property know that their tenants haven't paid the bill. So we have a lot of work to do in a short period of time, but it's something that we need to do, to get, to get a story. It's a lot of work, but.
Mayor. We need to set that date as soon as possible, because we just trying to stay in state statute rule. So long as we put it out there, and you can have, you still can work on the budget, but it's. You have to go.
Budget and the, the budget and the leviation.
But the levy has to be filed, by the first Tuesday, is that something that needs to be done? As soon as we need to do.
Okay, so we are, as soon as you guys are done, we'll go ahead and call a meeting.
Okay.
As soon as we're done. And I wanna thank the treasurer for bringing that and reminding me, because, so that I can remind the citizens now that if you haven't paid your sewer bill, and corporate citizens as well, now would be a good time to do it, because we are gonna be collecting. Okay? Thank you, treasurer. Mr. Richard Treewell?
Um, I'm here, I've been filling a site over here between the MetroLink and 7th Street. And we've had a lot of clean fill, and over the past year or so, we've had a lot of illegal dumping. And it, it, I guess it goes to this other lady's comment earlier, but it doesn't seem as though the regulatory affairs have any real teeth to do anything about it. Now, I've been liaising with Jason, and he's mentioned that there's been a lot of calls about the dirt over there, and I've said to him, over the period, that a lot of the dirt's not my, it's not my rock and concrete and et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just wondering if there's any way that you can give the regulatory affairs people some teeth? Because I spoke to Courtney the other day about it, and he said, well, send me the pictures, and it's been reported to the police, but, you know, it, it can cost tens of thousands of dollars to remove this stuff. And it's happened two or three times. We've put up cameras, we've got pictures of perpetrators, but it's, there's so, nothing can really be done. And the essence is on me to, to fix and remove, and of course, we have to truck the stuff out, get equipment, they're heavy equipment, and we've had probably 1,000 tons of concrete, and rock, and all bigger stuff that can be there for the clean fill. So I'm just wondering if there's anything to be done about it, you know, any real, because suing doesn't, you know, that, that can be, end up being years, and of course, we're, we're expected to remove this stuff sort of near immediately, you know.
So Mr. Treewell, you did file a police report?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Jason's aware of it, but we've gone backwards and forth, he's been pleasant about it, or it's just that, you know.
So when you say give it some teeth, I'm not sure what.
Well, the regulatory affairs, you know, maybe confiscate their trucks or something, I mean, or at least find somebody and do some, you know, get at these people who are just continuously doing this stuff.
Chief, have you coordinated with the police chief on this issue?
Not yet. I have talked, I told Chief Hubbard I had to speak with him myself, but I hadn't gotten around to it. But when I spoke with Mr. Treewell, I did direct him to the police department, because it becomes illegal dumping, that becomes a criminal now at this point. We don't have arresting power in regulatory affairs to go out and arrest anyone for them. So I said, the picture that he has, the information, he can turn over to the police department. I did make some calls to several companies, and they pointed their fingers at each other to say, he was that guy, he was that guy, he was that guy. So I'm still following up with. So I'm still following up with that. But I have brought that information, I apologize to Mr. Trelo about this situation.
Okay, so it sounds like there needs to be some enforcement on the police side. Have you provided them with the video?
Uh, yeah, I've talked to them about it, and I've gotten, I've talked to Courtney about it as well. But I also talked to Felicia yesterday, and she said, "Well, there's no real way, you don't have court or something here at the moment, and it's not much you can do about it."
She said what?
She said that you don't have any real finability or any real legal recourse other than suing, is what I think my interpretation of what she said to me was.
The regulatory affairs court is not set up, but as I stated before, that becomes a criminal matter. That's illegal dumping, and once that has to be turned over. If I went out there today, I still could arrest him without assistance of the police department. So that's where we have to, the start has to go, we'll start here. And we'll move forward to get to the investigation of these guys pointing a finger at.
I guess I wasn't clear, so you've really got some teeth, and you would really move forward with some of this stuff?
The police department has teeth.
Okay.
I got gums.
Okay, so chief, will you make sure that this is coordinated with the police department? So that we can go, because we've been looking at those piles of dirt and concrete and all that, and then illegal dump, and we want to make sure that the people who have been dumping it are prosecuted to the fullest extent, because we're tired of that. That's not just, that's not the only area. And folks have got to know that they just cannot come in our city and do whatever they want to do. We're not happening. So please make sure that's taken care of. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let the citizens know that a lot of the, I've been in a lot of calls, a lot of the city manager's assistant, and I've gotten a lot of calls about this dumping. And a lot of people are saying that it is, uh, citizens. You know, we hear a lot of complaints saying that people are coming through St. Louis, and that's not the case. People are telling us that they are citizens. And what I ask the citizens to do is spread the word and ask that, you know, I feel like some of these people, you know these people, or you've seen them around, and, you know, it's like, "Well, that's not my problem." And they will come in and say, "Well, the regulatory affairs needs to do this, this, and that." But nobody's had a person to help you with that. So that's all I, I just ask that. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley, Councilman Mosley, Councilman Mosley, Councilman Hamilton-Dane.